I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on March 22nd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knudsen, Gross, Quinn.
Present.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Three of our five council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff members in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, on to item number four. So tonight we have several proclamations. The first proclamation is in coordination with our meals on, our local Meals on Wheels program, and it is a proclamation declaring Coralville as the month celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. All right. Whereas fifty years ago, on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals sixty years and older. And whereas for five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels and is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas this year Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the Meals on Wheels Awareness Campaign to celebrate fifty years of success and garner the support needed to ensure that these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered, in Coralville, Iowa, has served our communities admirably for sixty-two years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Coralville, Iowa are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Coralville, Iowa, provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout Coralville that help maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs deserve recognition for their heroic contribution and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it's over. And whereas the senior population is increasing substantially, an action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and awareness to ensure these vital services continue for another fifty years. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of Coralville, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as a month to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, and urge every community member to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors that they serve, and the volunteers who help care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the national celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Signed this 22nd day of March 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right. And we have the Meals on Wheels Coordinator, Doreen Not, here tonight to accept this proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Yes, yep. Head on over to the mic.
First, I want to thank you, Mayor Foster, for the March for Meals 50th Anniversary Proclamation, and thank you, councilors, as well. You guys are all very supportive. As you know, Meals on Wheels is a vital service for seniors everywhere. In Johnson County, we currently have 183 clients, and that number is climbing. In the last two months, January and February, we delivered a total of 7,995 meals. So even if we were not to grow, we would still have 48,000 meals by the end of the year. We depend on volunteers to deliver all meals as we have few staff. Currently, we have eighty-six volunteers and could use more. The last two months, our volunteers worked a total of 537 hours. If we would have had to pay staff to make deliveries, the cost would have been $12,351 just for two months. I would also like to invite each and every one of you to join us on a ride-along to meet your constituents. Usually when people go on ride-alongs with me, we just go to two to three clients, but just so they have an opportunity to meet you and you them, and see the circumstances that they are living with. They are so appreciative for this service, and they would be delighted to meet any one of you. Thank you for your support. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to get a photo, you can come on up. Yep. All right. Here. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much. March 30th, 2022, as Honeybee Day in the city of Coralville. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food that we eat, and honeybees are vital in production of over ninety crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuring availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife, and all Iowans. And whereas Iowa's 45,000 or more honeybee hives produce about four million pounds of honey, valued at over eight million dollars, and honeybees provide an estimated $92 million of economic value to Iowa crops from their pollination. And whereas Iowa has over 4,500 beekeepers, representing hobbyists, side liners as part-time business, and full-time commercial beekeepers. Beekeepers have as few as one to two hives in a single apiary to 100 apiaries with thousands of hives of individual commercial operations. And whereas traditionally beekeeping occurred in the rural areas of Iowa, now bee hives are increasingly in urban areas with the rising interest of hobby beekeepers that keep honeybees in Iowa cities and towns. And whereas the state of Iowa has an active apiary inspection program that protects honeybees and beekeepers, inspecting for apiary diseases and pests, as well as actively encouraging the best beekeeping practices by outreach to individuals and beekeeping groups. And whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests and disease, decreasing bee-friendly habitat, variable climate, and pesticide and herbicide pressure. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby proclaim March 30th, 2022, to be Iowa Honeybee Day, corresponding with Governor Reynolds' proclamation, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to join in observing this day and focusing on the importance of honeybees to our state economy, to enjoy the honey and other products of the hive, and to recognize the honeybee's role in maintaining our Iowa environment, and to assist in reducing the threats to honeybee survival in our state. Signed on this 22nd day of March 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okey-dokey. And we have a representative, Director Edward St. John of the Iowa Honeybee Group will accept this proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
Please.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor and council, for participation. As you know, Governor Reynolds did sign a proclamation for March 30th. We support, we promote this just as a public awareness of the importance of insect pollinators and honeybees to our economic, ecological, and food sustainability issues. I can say you're joining many other folks in participating with your proclamation. In my district alone, and there's five districts in Iowa, there's Johnson County Board of Supervisors, Iowa City, North Liberty, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Osage, Monizuma, Cresco, Waverly, New Hampton, and Charle City that have also issued proclamations so far. So, you may not know this, how important honeybees are to the food supply. It's about a third of it. Every, we send, Iowa sends thousands of bee hives to California every November and December. California imports about 2 million bee hives every year just for their almond fields. They pollinate the almond fields in January and February. And then, actually, 90% of all bee hives in the United States are on semi-trucks. And they travel around the interstate pollinating our foods because we just don't have enough insect pollinators anymore because of our agricultural habits, you know, and some of our chemicals. We have a great public transportation system. Some countries like China don't yet. So there's sections in China where they get on stepladders and pollinate with a paintbrush from flower to flower yet. So I thank you for participation, just raising public awareness about insect pollinators. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Would you like to come up and get a photo?
I should ask you those questions, I guess.
Okay.
I'll take your.
Thank you.
No clue about that.
All right.
I'll just drink a little.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, last and certainly not least, we have a proclamation declaring April 3rd through 9th, 2022, as National Library Week. All right, here we go. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing educational and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and to become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes in addition to books. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations that they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continue to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are the cornerstones of our democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, proclaim April 3rd through 9th, 2022, as National Library Week. Further, I encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. Signed and sealed this 22nd day of March 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. And I believe we have the president of the Coralville Library Board of Trustees, Amanda Elkins, here to accept the National Library Week proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. So I've met a number of you. I've been on the library board for about four years, and I've been the president for about two months. And so I have a group, everybody actually over here, is here from the library board and library staff to thank you all for recognizing this important week. You know, libraries across the country have faced a number of challenges as of late, whether it be COVID or through legislative proposals as of late. But the library continues to be strong and resilient, and most importantly, a safe space for all community members. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And come on up and accept the proclamation.
Hi.
Oh, the whole gang, yes.
I wish that.
So we have some other members of the board trustees.
I should.
And we have our Assistant Director, Ellen Alexander, with us.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe they could say their names.
Yeah, and our library board.
That's right.
What about the old ones?
Introduce yourself. We're all friends here.
You've already forgotten, Nikki.
All right. And Ellen, you know, hi, right?
Yes.
And Patner.
And I'm Keith Jones.
All right. Thank you all for your service to the city of Coralville. Scoochin'. All right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so our other two council members have joined us this evening. Welcome, welcome. Yes, and?
There was no place to park. It was so.
Out there? That's where you were? You were in the parking lot?
There was no parking. It was always an auto way over there.
Well, I'll allow it this time.
I took the bus here, yeah.
Okay, on to item number five, community comments. So this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that are on the agenda or are not on the agenda, but, I'm sorry, items that aren't on the agenda or are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So, if there's anyone that would like to come and speak to us, step up to the mic and state your name.
Hi, my name is Dennis Latem. I am the acting chair for the Citizens Community Policing Advisory Board. And we've been up and running for about six months now. We have not given a report to council yet, so we're going to do that tonight. And we will start doing it on the last meeting of each quarter, so we'll do quarterly reports to let you know where we're at.
And I'm Kathy Hotson-Pellermore, board member. I also want to invite you all in the public to our meetings, which are the fourth Monday of each month, right here at 6:00 PM. The first two months of our meetings were spent reviewing the code of ordinance for the board responsibilities and organizing our meeting structure. We did make a couple significant decisions. One being that we have added a community experience agenda item where members from the community can come and talk about any concerns or experiences they have had in the community. Also, we would like to remove the word "citizen" from our title so that we'll just be called the Community Policing Advisory Board. We just thought that would be more inclusive. We spent time reviewing the 2019 police data that was collected. We reviewed the processes for accessing and filing complaints, the complaint form with the Coralville Police Department, created a workflow including complaint submissions to the ICRC, which is Iowa Civil Rights Commission, and that you all approved that. We created a spreadsheet for monitoring complaints, and we created and submitted an article to the Coralville Connection to introduce the board to the community.
Okay, so keeping in mind with our earlier objectives were to get ourselves known to the community, so the Coralville Connection was one of those steps. We also acquired an email address through the city so that we have a way for people from the community to contact us by email, and that's been posted on our website through the Coralville webpage, or on our webpage through the Coralville website. We developed a trifold pamphlet that we wanted to distribute that explains the purpose of the board and also introduces what we do and how the process would work for somebody that would wish or need to make a complaint. That currently has been submitted to Jen Coleman. She just text, emailed me tonight that said that she got some approvals that she needed from the city administrations, and there's just a few minor changes. So once that's done, it will be ready to be printed and distributed. And we're looking at putting it into the public places in Coralville, such as City Hall, the Public Library, and?
Food pantry.
And Food Pantry, and perhaps Rec Center. And then there's also been requests to perhaps put it out with some of the organizations that we serve, such as NAACP and NULLAC, so that they would have access to this also. One, the other things I'm working with Jen on is to try to get our website updated with some helpful links that people might find useful if they navigate to our webpage. So for example, we would like to have the complaint form in a printable format available through the website, and also a link to the pamphlet that I was just talking about. So if they don't have it in front of them, but they see that, oh, they got some information here, they could print it off. But also have some helpful links, so we could have a link. We could have a link to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, because they become very important in the whole process, and perhaps to some of these other organizations that I had just previously mentioned. At our most recent board meeting, we discussed accessibility issues, so that comes up quite often. There's a portion of our community that we want to serve that does not have access to attend a meeting, and we do not have any virtual type of meeting. There's no Zoom or anything. So we feel that we might be letting people that need to be served out of the picture. So we've had a lot of discussions about trying to get some type of a virtual access, and we understand that city council is also talking about these same issues. So we'll just sort of wait and see what you come up with, with what you decide upon when you have your discussions, and see if we can find that to be useful for what we need to do also. But we did go into a little more than just the physical access to meetings. So we looked at access obstacles by language or cultural obstacles, or also sight and hearing if those are going to be issues. We felt that we actually would be okay that we don't provide or put obstacles in front of people that have those special needs, but the virtual access to the meeting type, to the meetings is one of the important ones for us. And then throughout the whole six months, we've been talking about training opportunities. A lot of things that we would like to be able to do weren't available or aren't available right now because of the pandemic, such as doing Police Academy. We talked about maybe having some kind of training from Johnson County Mental Health. But one of the things that we do have scheduled to come up in one of our future meetings is somebody will come and talk to us about the Iowa Code, Chapter 400, which I'm not totally sure I know what that is, but I'm going to find out what that is, I think, when they come and give us a presentation.
Ride-alongs?
And a ride-along, yeah. And also do a ride-along. So, those are the things we've been working on. We've, you know, been keeping ourselves pretty busy. The one thing that I would like to bring up that we haven't talked about is we are still short one member on the board. I don't know if they were actively going to replace that person. I do want to hold off in distributing any printed materials if we know that we're going to have a replacement, so we don't have to turn around a month later and say, you got to reprint all this stuff because we have a new member we need added to it. So we don't really know where we're at with that. Is that something that's happening, or?
Yeah, that will be, we'll be working on getting that recruited.
Okay, so I am going to hold off on having Jen distribute any of the printed material until we find out who that person would be then. Okay?
And thank you, Kevin, and Chief Crone, for your support, and all of you for coming to the meetings and supporting us, because it's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. We appreciate everyone's work on this, and just appreciate all the time and service. Thanks so much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to us about an item that is not on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda that are not subject to a public hearing? Okay, then we will, we will move on to item number six, Lot 2, Red Hawk Subdivision Part III. This is a public hearing that will rezone a .6 acre parcel to Community Planned Unit Development II District in order to build two multi-tenant commercial buildings. And we will start this item off with the report from the Community Development Department of Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. This development will have 118 parking spaces that are required. 130 are being provided, and three bicycle racks are being provided with this development. And all stormwater will be managed appropriately on-site. The site will include 51 trees and 355 shrubs and grasses, which will also comply, be compliant with our street, or our landscape and screening requirements. And the building materials for this project are predominantly brick, stone, and glass, which also align with the West Land Use Area Master Plan Design and Architectural Guidelines. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their March 2nd, 2022 meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, the commission recommended to approve the rezoning of Lot 2, Red Hawk Subdivision Part III from CPUD 1 to CBUD 2, as well as the site plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us on this item? Are there any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1001, and ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2, Red Hawk Subdivision Part III. Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot Two, Red Hawk Subdivision Part Three from CPUD 1, Commercial Plan Unit Development One District, to CPUD 2, Commercial Plan Unit Development Two District, introduced for adoption in first consideration by Council Member Knutson, seconded by.
Seconded by Goodrich. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
That's Mark Gross. Hi. Quinn?
Hi.
Dodd?
Hi.
Goodrich?
Hi.
Knutson?
Hi.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes. Item number seven, Forever Green Heights Phase Two. This is a public hearing. This site plan is for a 31.46 acre parcel, which will include 71 single-family detached homes and a 9.94 acre future city park. And we have our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson, to provide a report on this.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. This property is currently zoned RPUD 1 for residential development. This PUDs are intended to allow some flexibility in design while also encouraging a quality of development that surpasses what is typically required within a traditional subdivision, you might say. So typically, we expect that a PUD exceed the zoning and subdivision requirements from Chapter 165 of our code. So a little bit of history on this. The PUDA, the master plan, the overall master plan for this project, as well as the preliminary plat for this development, and I will note, the total development is about 251 acres, was reviewed and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in January of 2021. City Council then reviewed the master plan, January 26th of 2021, and approved that. Phase One, you will notice, is currently under construction. That is, single-family detached homes, as well as some duplexes, or I should say, some zero-lot duplexes that are being built. And Forever Green Heights Phase Two, that is a total of 31 acres. Mayor, you did note that there's about nine acres of park space set aside in this development. And there's also a stormwater wetland with a walking path that will provide additional recreational, as well as potential interpretive opportunities for this project. And of course, there will be 71 new dwellings, all of them single-family detached. All lots will be a minimum 5,000 square feet, 100 feet deep and 50 feet wide. And all the building setbacks will meet the building setbacks for a typical residential development. The average density for this project is 3.30 dwelling units per acre, or for this particular phase, that is under the approved average dwelling units per acre of 4.0, I think it was approximately 4.5, might have been 4.48, that was approved in the master plan. And the lot dimensions in Phase Two, as well as the proposed uses, can be considered consistent with the types, density, and dimensions that were approved in the master plan. So the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed Phase Two at their March 2nd meeting. And by a vote of six to zero, the commission did recommend approving Phase Two for Forever Green Heights as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Welcome and state your name, please.
Thank you, I'm Matthew Adam. I represent the developer of this project. Dave, thanks for your summary. I think you did a good job of summarizing where we're at. I don't, I want to be cognizant of your time and don't want to restate a bunch of it. But we have started Phase One that was approved by council. Houses are being dug currently in Phase One. Some, in fact, I think five are already sold. I have a representative here of D.R. Horton, the builder, Seth Moulton, that can answer any questions the council might have. I also am happy to answer any questions you might have. This is Phase Two. The first phase was around 51 lots and Phase Two is 71 lots that we hope to get completed yet this spring or this summer and have lots ready for this fall for building. The, I guess the estimate is or the projection is that these are going to go fast based on the current sales that we've already had. So we're hopeful to get this going and get the improvements in yet this spring and summer so they would be ready for this fall as the other lots, and that undoubtedly will get absorbed in that amount of time in Phase One. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, any home-specific questions about the types of homes being built in this particular phase. Phase One, you will note in your packets, were what we call Plans One and Two, which were a little scaled down. This phase has Plans Three and Four, which are more stone, more amenities to the homes, and still trying to hit that affordability price point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matt, can I ask you a question just on that last point? You know, I think when I voted for this, it was based on the affordability price point that was presented. And obviously, pandemic and supply chains, materials, that's changed. Can you just maybe talk about what you're doing to make sure that those prices stay as close to the prices that we were told during that time as possible?
Yeah, I think Seth would probably be best to answer that. I mean, not to annoy the question, but my role in this is kind of more infrastructure.
Gotcha.
And he's more vertical improvements. And I think he can talk a lot to that about the housing market currently and what the price points are that they're hitting.
Thank you.
Seth Moulton, 2874 Northwest 86 Place, Ankeny, Iowa. For a quick rewind, I did want to say bees, back to that. I do have 30 bee hives I usually keep at my house. And I also have those bees transported to California every, every fall, and they come back every spring. So yes, it is definitely important. And my, our honey is actually sold in local hive bees, you know, back in the Des Moines area. So definitely, it was pretty cool to see that. So I think that's awesome. So speaking back to the housing side and affordability, obviously, yes, from 2021 to today, times are much different. We have a housing market that is really severely undersupplied in general on the resale side, which I tell people, it's a really good thing and it's a really bad thing because, you know, if you, if you own a home, more likely you've seen a lot of appreciation and value that's happened. The flip side is if you want to move out of home or you've grown out of home, where are you going to go and how much is that home going to cost you? And so obviously, as Representative D.R. Horton, our job is to try and drive affordability in the housing sector to whatever that market is today. And again, we released five, five of those homes of Forever Green for sale. Price points were between like $350 and $400,000, which is higher than what we initially drove for. But at the time we released those homes for sale, they were actually the five least expensive single-family homes for sale in Corleville, resale or new. So we are definitely doing our best to try and drive down price points and try and give an alternative to some of the other new construction that's in town. Right now, currently, our two stories are priced between $170, $180 a square foot. If you look at even resale markets right now, they're well over $200 a square foot. So we do have an economy of scale because we are a large national single-family home builder, that we do think that bringing a consistent product to the market, when I say consistent, we are going to try and start around five to eight homes per month until they can't provide lots for us anymore. So what that will do is provide a consistent housing stock for the, for the community. So that way, there's always an alternative on new construction to come into the marketplace. But yes, I mean, affordability is our first and foremost, most important side. Tell people if we can't build something that the public wants, then we're all in a pretty bad spot. So definitely understanding the times that are out there and rising interest rates, that's what we're there to do. So, and then again, I would say this, in working with the building staff in several meetings with them and understanding, call it the expectations of Corleville, definitely reasonable, and we appreciate the clear directive from the community. So we're able to come in here and basically come into the community and be a, be a good member of the community. So, but yeah, any questions on the houses, we're here to answer. Like I said, if you go out there, if you've been out there the last few weeks, obviously you can see a lot of things are changing and it's gonna, it's, the landscape out there will change rather rapidly.
Thank you.
Yes.
I noticed you have a number of different roof line choices.
Yes.
How, how does that work?
Good question. So each elevation, we've got, call it four different elevations and then four different variations of those elevations. Our goal is, when you come into our projects, that you're not really going to run into the same house twice, especially by the time you add the color schemes in. So there is going to be a character to the development, that it won't be just cookie cutter, every house the same. But again, being that we're building a similar home over and over again, it allows us, in economy scale, to be, bring an affordability to the neighborhood. So we do get the character of the exterior elevations with the multiple options, but still can drive efficiencies and price points by narrowing down our plan, plan lineups. Yes. If that helps you at all. But yeah, really, when our sales reps, they're employed by our, by us, the builder, they're the ones that actually listen to the, to the public as they come in, getting feedback, and then they're the ones specing the houses out for what the public's asking for.
Do you plan to have homes to show or won't you even need to do that?
Yes, ma'am. We will keep at least two full, fully-staffed models. They'll be open seven days a week. They are fully furnished models. We have professional decorators that come in, just like if someone lived there. It's what the models, the public's going to see when they come into our homes. So I think we've worked with Corleville. Sometimes we'll actually have models inside of the house. Some of our models around the United States, we actually have, we turn our garages into showrooms, but we're going to have them inside the houses here. So that way, if someone could walk in, walk in off the street, come into one of our houses, they could write a contract right there.
Sounds like you're in the market, Lori.
Actually, our son and daughter have bought one in Florida, and they bought a model home.
Yes.
So have been very happy with it.
Yeah, so D.R. Horton, I mean, nationally-wise, we're the largest single-family home builder in America. But it is a very local operation. I tell people, we're headquarters out of Fort Worth, Texas, but, you know, we rely on local information, local feedback from realtors. We hire, hire local people and subs. And, you know, we grow this very locally. So I'm proud to say in the last three months, we've started over 50 homes over here in the Eastern Iowa corridor, and that number will be double in the next about 60 days. So we, we have almost 2,000 lots under contract or controlled over in this market. So we definitely plan to come here and try and provide a housing stock that right now this market is clearly short of.
So I have a question. I think we tweaked or approved a small tweak to have fewer single fam, or more single-family homes than, than what was originally planned. Is that right?
Hasn't been considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission or, or City Council. Parts One and Part Two of Forever Green Heights are entirely aligned with the current master plan that's been approved.
Got it. So that's a future thing that we're thinking. It seemed kind of early to make that assessment.
Consideration in the future, correct.
Right.
You are looking at changing and it's based on demand for the lots, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Kelly. Thank you. The, the master plan, Phase One and Phase Two, we haven't changed that. But as we were going through and looking at, that was done a year ago, January 2021, it was approved. We went through and looking at it, we saw more of a demand for a single-family unit. So in Phase Three, which is kind of to the north and east up Scanlon Farms Road towards the high school, we're doing a small pocket of maybe 15 or ish acres max of kind of reshuffling around the types of units. The density will not change. The density stays the same. We're not asking for an increase. We're basically requesting, I think, 30 more or 32 more single-family homes at the expense of, I think, 30 townhouse-type homes. So that is what we've submitted to the development review team last month, I think, and that hopefully will be coming in front of council soon for that small tweak of the master plan. But it's a very small area on the north of Forever Green Road and to the east of Scanlon Farms Road.
So that sales assessment must not reflect your sales. That's just your assessment of the whole, of the market and what's selling in the area, I guess.
Me, specifically?
Yeah, I mean, this seems like so early to make that assessment for this particular specific development. You've sold five houses, but the market is moving in that direction is your assessment? Is that?
I think so, and I think Seth would agree with me that it's moving in that direction. And if you look at the master plan revisions, it's not just to try to get 30 more single-family homes. It's also to help with the street alignment because we're taking Craven Drive and wrapping it around through and making it a public street all the way through. And I think the development flow will flow better, the traffic will flow better. We just had some time in the last year to take a harder look at the master plan and see what kind of tweaks we could make to make it, I think, better. And with the flow of the traffic through Craven Drive coming all the way around and tying into Scanlon Farms Road, I think it lays out better and will be a better overall development. So we tried very hard not to change the density
Got it.
in the product mix. So yeah, we'll add another 30-ish single-family homes to go from like 320 to 350 approximately. So, yeah.
Yeah, can you, can you speak a little bit about the different price point as far as between single-family home, townhome, and zero lot?
Well, I think a single-family home's a price point. Seth can speak to that because currently, D.R. Horton is under contract to buy the single-family lots. And we've had, and they've had some sales in the last couple of weeks. On the zero lots, there are 38 zero lots, so I think 19 lots with a total of 38 units on Lathan Lane, that's in the first phase. Those are sold to another builder, Shelby Builders, which is Jason Dumont. And I believe he's already put some of those on, on the MLS. I don't remember the price off the top of my head, but I can get that question answered for you. I would think it's around the high twos or 300,000-ish for the duplex lots that he has placed on the MLS. I don't think he started building those yet, but he's trying to get some pre-sold is what I understand. The townhouse lots, the, I believe Jason is, well, he is buying those. There's two outlots in Phase One on the west side of this property, the southwest side. And he has, I believe, submitted plans or site plans for those two outlots to the development review team last, right? And I don't know where that's at because, again, he's buying those outlots as-is and he's running through that process. So I'd be remiss to speak about his pricing. I don't know what that's going to be. I can't speak to that.
Just as a reminder, we did want to work with the public school in coordinating, cooperating with numbers and so on for the elementary schools. So that's always been our concern, that we wouldn't have to see busing and all that involved in this area.
Yeah, and I think it's going to be very walkable. We, the Scanlon Farms Road from Forever Green North up to the high school, if you look at the master plan, it's kind of, it's got a big sidewalk offset to the side. We've got some big trees, three, four, five-inch caliber trees in the developer agreement, setting for that, walking them right up along Scanlon Farms Road to get to the high school and presumably across to the elementary school. There'll be trails around the park that's in the second phase that we're asking for approval tonight, tying into the trail system that will also tie into the Johnson County Trail System across the street, Dubuque Street. So I think it's going to be very pedestrian-friendly, given all the stuff that we've done.
And I think on that point too, just with the schools, I think, you know, at least from my perspective, the goal is also Liberty has, its FRL footprint is half that of the other two high schools. So trying to get those more in balance and not to, you know, to close that gap and not to widen it. So that's a definitely a concern that I have, to make sure that we're, we're heading in that direction.
And if there's a new elementary school, just being careful that we're not creating a high constant, you know, a very high concentration of, of wealth in, in one school, just because we've seen how those types of discrepancies can play out throughout our elementary schools in the district.
Will there be still condos and things there too then with this plan? Or is it going to all be single home or duplexes?
No, we've got a good mix. There's around 350 single-family homes if the revised master plan is approved. I don't remember the exact number of duplexes or townhouse-style units. But in addition, we have 72, the master plan calls for 72 apartment-style condominium units, 324plexes. That adds up to 72, yeah. And then Mr. Scanlon has retained, for his own development purposes, two very large outlots with density of, I don't remember the exact units. One was like 160 and the other was like 80 of bigger units. I, again, I don't know what he's doing with those, but that's what the council approved back in January of 2021. So we've got a mix of everything, really.
That's good.
Those lots will be on the, where the roundabouts on both sides.
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon held, or both, one on North Liberty Road, one on Dubuque Street, where the roundabouts are going to go.
We just want to make sure with our residential new developments that there's a good balance of the free and reduced lunch so that it doesn't tip one way or the other. And we see that that works out much better for our community, so.
So for the sake of affordability, the square footage, how, how different? So for the sake of affordability, the square footage, how, how different is it compared to, you know, between condo, townhome. Zero lot and single family, like the smallest single family that you have on those lots?
What are the square footage of those units?
Yeah, just to compare like price point, because obviously condo, you don't have land, and then single family, you have land, so therefore the price is higher, just.
What are the square footage of your single family homes?
So our ranch units that we've sold out there are sixteen hundred and thirty-five square feet. Those were priced between three sixty-five and three eighty-four with finished basement on the three eighty-four side. I actually looked it up today, there's five active ranch homes for sale in Corralville right now. They average just under sixteen hundred square feet at a price point of anywhere from five fifty to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're. Many, over a hundred square feet less, per square foot less than what, right now, the community is currently being able to ask on the single family side. Again, when it, I, I can't speak to the townhomes or any of that, I just know the single family side is. Right now, there's, really, there's not even resales that will match our price point for price per square foot. So again, we're really trying to drive square footages, or price per square foot down. And, and not sacrifice all the square footage in a home. Being that our homes are anywhere from sixteen hundred on the ranch side to over two thousand on a two-story.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for answering all the questions.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for answering our questions, we appreciate it. Just double checking, are there any written comments on this item?
No written.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and we can consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the P U D B site plan for Forever Green Heights Phase Two. Introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any other further discussion or questions on this item? Roll call please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight is a consolidated transit funding application. This is an item that would set the public hearing for this on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The resolution please.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the city of Corralville fiscal year twenty twenty-three Iowa Department of Transportation Consolidated Transit Funding Application. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Seconded. Seconded by Dodd's. I will start the discussion on this item with a question that I received from a constituent. I received an email asking about electric buses. And I was just wondering if we could talk a little bit about. The discussion that we had about those electric buses at our work session and, you know, how Iowa City was able to get theirs. And some of the issues that we would have with that.
Yeah, the Iowa City has, God, I believe, four of them and they received a substantial grant to help with the cost. And I believe even with that, it's still more expensive than the rest of the buses. And then you have to change your maintenance facility, there's a significant investment there. The biggest issue for us to even get to the point of considering them is they will not fit under the Iowa Avenue Bridge. And because an electric bus is taller and to. Avoid the Iowa Avenue Bridge, all but one of our routes goes through that location. And to try to avoid that would add a significant amount of time to our routes. Because the direction and locations where people want to get on the Corralville Transit are through that location. And so that's the biggest issue. The university has the same issue and they're questioning whether they'll do electric buses for that reason. Because you, you can't take the risk that somebody would drive the bus on the wrong street. And they tried it and if you went really slow and nothing was. Changed, you could get about a half an inch is what the.
Hopefully no pothole.
Yeah, exactly, or snow or bouncing or anything else. So at this particular time, that's the major hurdle for us.
Great.
And that's the smallest side, that the bus, the electric bus come in Kelly, they don't make them any smaller.
Right, and if you look at those buses, because I saw one just the other day, there's a substantial portion of that is on the top of the bus. And there, I happened to see a diesel bus and that go side by side. And there's a significant difference in sizes of those, between those two buses.
Thank you for that overview. Another question that I had was about the, I noticed that there were some. New bus shelters listed in that, in that project list. I was just curious if we had an idea of where those would go or do we have any flexibility if this is funded?
Yes.
Because the, these are not, these are just projects that we are submitting applications for.
Correct.
Do we, if we were to get that funding, do we have any idea where those shelters would go?
We would look at what our most popular sites are with the most people and try to fit them into those particular locations. The other thing you have to look at is the ability to actually get them in the public right of way. And, and a lot of the locations, they won't fit, and so there's a limited number of places where those would work as well.
One of the areas that I've been, I've had constituents ask about putting bus shelters is on, along Holiday Road. And I wonder if there would be right of way issues there.
I would guess there is, because it's a pretty narrow loc- section through there.
And they have to meet ADA, which is also a problem getting in and out of those, with not a lot of land to work with.
Can they just leave it open on both ends, was that, was that ADA compatible then?
Yeah, it is, but you still have to be able to access it off of the sidewalk. And then the pad to get to the bus itself has to be, and that's where you get into the problems.
So they'd be doing curb cuts possibly and, okay.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item or any other discussion?
Yeah, just for, just for the, the sake of, you know, time. If we were to go with the electric bus route and then we have to reroute our, our two buses that go from Iowa City to Corralville.
Well, it's more than two buses, it's all but one.
All of them.
All of them but one go through that location.
Go through the, the Iowa Avenue?
Yep.
Just to, you know, calculate a time, how much time would it add on to each route, would you say half an hour, an hour?
Well, it would probably be ten to fifteen minutes.
Because they have to go to the riverside.
It would have to go down to Burlington Street and then it would have to go up to Clinton. The other problem is you would be also going in the wrong direction. Because, and then you'd have to get down too by the Memorial Union. So you'd be going in the opposite direction of where people are trying to go and to get on and off the buses in those locations.
Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number nine is for a community, community development block grant program. And there are two parts to this agenda item. Item A is for a grant contract for the Corralville Community Food Pantry Commercial Kitchen Equipment. And is not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, resolution please.
Resolution approving a community development block grant COVID-nineteen Program Contract Number Twenty C V N O two-five. With the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions, comments or discussion on this item?
I was just curious when we're gonna get this finally approved, it seems like it's been on the agenda multiple times.
Was approved and so now these are the contracts to formally approve the contract with them, so.
The contract approved the contract.
Yes.
The man's the contract.
Got it, thanks. I know this, this one has been, has had a lot of steps, so we certainly do appreciate the, all of the work that has been done on this. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to quickly say thank you to Kelly and Ellen for working so hard on this. I know that there was so many hurdles that, you know, the city had to jump through, it just, one after another, after another. We thought that we had it in all done and then they come up with more question and more question. So really, really, really appreciate your patience and help in getting this, thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Roll call please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Abstain.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Resolution is approved with four ayes and one abstention. Now on to item number B. This, it will allow the East Central Iowa Council of Governments, or E C C O G. To administer, administer the purchase of the commercial kitchen, commercial kitchen equipment for the Corralville Community Food Pantry. Through the Community Development Block Grant COVID-nineteen Program for the city of Corralville. Resolution please.
Resolution approving a contract for Community Development Block Grant Program Services with the East Central Iowa Council of Governments. To administer the purchase of community or commercial kitchen equipment for Corralville Community Food Pantry for the city of Corralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any other questions or comments or discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Abstain.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved with four ayes and one abstention. Item number ten is a turf and horticulture contract. This is for a three-year contract for turf care and mowing, horticulture and tree care. And we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud here to give us a, a bid report.
Thank you mayor, we took bids on Tuesday, March fifteenth for a reduced bid scope on the turf and hort contract. These areas include the I River Landing Common Area Maintenance Area, the I River Landing Non-Cam. So if you think about north of East Ninth and south of East Ninth, as you go down around the arena and Staybridge Suites, that's cam. Everything else kind of pushed off towards the wetland park and the parking lots is, and then down around the Riverfront Park is non-cam. Then Highway Six, Coral Ridge Avenue and our stormwater and flood management and flood berm areas are the, the areas that we bid in this contract. We received bidding for all of it from three bidders and for, for just Highway Six on a, from a fourth bidder. And we had a new bidder who had not bid before out of Cedar Rapids called Cutting Edge. So Alex and I went and visited their operations facility, made sure they had the equipment that could do the job. Talked with them about some work they have done for the city of Cedar Rapids that's very similar. They do the medians there and the stormwater and they had a, a three-year contract with them as well. And decided that, that we feel that their expertise of staff and their equipment is sufficient to complete this contract. So our prices for just the twenty twenty-two varied from low bid of two hundred and sixty-four thousand four oh five up to high bid of five hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And we would like to recommend that we go with Cutting Edge for all of our contracted areas and award that for a three-year contract.
Fantastic, thank you so much for that report. Okay, we will now consider the resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four turf and horticultural contract. Introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any other questions or discussion on this item or comments? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eleven is the Creekside Connection Single Track. This is to construct the Deer, Deer Creek, Dogwoods, Farm Junk and Flow Style segments within the Creekside Connection Single Track. And we will continue with our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud, with a quotation report for this project.
Thank you, I love the names of all the different areas under this one.
I have questions.
Yes.
Did you come up with them?
Yes, I did not, no, I did not, no, but they're lovely, I love, they, they all describe where they're going through. We, the Parks Department has been working with a number of different organizations to complete where we are. We've left off just south of the Residence Inn, near the Coral Ridge Avenue Extension Area. We've come down through the Switzer Mill Site with a single track trail around that area. Come back up through and have left off just a little bit to the south of where this map shows on the, let's see, to your right on that map. And this would, this contract, along with some in-house work that they've already started, will get us all the way to Corralville Creekside Ballpark. So we will have a complete trail system, right now we are at seven miles. And so we're going to end up with almost nine miles of single track trail when we finish this project. So you go, start off from here, you will duck under Deer Creek Road, you'll, you'll go down through this wooded area and come out. If you recall, we worked with the Iowa, the Iowa D O T on this wetlands area that they wanted to put in this basin. To connect islands across here, knowing that we wanted to connect boardwalks. Again, getting people up close and personal with their wetlands and water here in the community. We'll come down and go and take advantage of the riparian banks, the riparian steps here that, that were built along also by the D O T project. Come up into our Oak Savannah area and then duck out here into the wooded area. And be able to take advantage of a little bit of elevation in that area before we come out at Creekside Ballpark. We recommend, we took quotes for this, we had three bidders. The low bidder unfortunately was unable to perform that work to be completed by July of this year. And the reason why we want to get done with this project, not only because we're very excited about writing it. But also we are part of the Core Four Event that's gonna take place on August twenty-seventh. That's gonna bring riders, bring riders from all over the country here to the area and they will ride a day of gravel. They will ri- or I'm sorry, they will ride a day full of trail, gravel, road and single track trail. And so we're hosting the single track portion of that day. So we will go to the second lowest bidder Pathfinder Trail Building for thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Fantastic, thank you so much for that report. All right, resolution please.
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding contract for the Creekside Connection Single Track. Introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Seconded. Seconded by Dodd's. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
Just curious, what was the difference between the two bids?
A thousand dollars? Yeah. Thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty is the, was the low from Dirt Candy. The next one was thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five, so not quite a thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So I gotta know, talk to me about the farm junk thing.
Farm.
Like what is, what is that?
And so some of that, some of the area has some old farm implements that have kind of been buried over the years in the, in that area out to the west. And so instead of digging it up, they're taking advantage of being able to ride around that safely. Of course, we'll have buffer zones, but it will remain there.
Nice, that's very, very interesting. Part of Iowa. It is, it is, my dad buries stuff, my dad is a farmer and he buries stuff all the time, yeah, I'm like, that's not good.
These are okay, no gas in the tanks, nothing like that, we're okay.
It seems like some of these trails are one-way.
Some of them are one-way, this is a two-way.
Two-way, is, is it wider then or, a little bit wider?
It is, and has some areas where you might see a, like a swing out, you can go, come out, come back together.
Sorry Sherri, it's on the wrong memo, I just saw that was spelled out right here for me.
That's okay. These are very cool.
These are very cool trails. If the community has, if you haven't taken a look at them or ridden them, I would encourage you to do so. They're, they're really fun. And they're a really, really great amenity. Like you mentioned the, the, the ride that is happening that we're be, able to host because we have this, this trail in our community.
Yes. So be able, they're, they're expecting, they're hoping for somewhere between 750 to 1,000 riders that are going to be coming here in August to specifically ride. We're gaining, you know, Midwest attention for gravel, for gravel riding. And we have the, the Sugar Bottom out at the, the Core of Engineers Land, ours, some other single-track in the area. So that's a great amenity to this. Of course, our trail system's fabulous throughout Johnson County and some on-road riding. So it's going to be an exciting day. I think I added up that you need four bicycles, though.
Wow. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross. Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12 is for the Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. This agreement is for the banking instrument development, establishment of the legal language and easements, and 90% design of the project for the Clear Creek Mitigation Bank Phase One. Resolution, please?
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G for Clear Creek Mitigation Bank, mitigation banking instrument introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? It's another very cool project that we are working on.
And actually Judy Joyce is with us tonight. I was looking for the right map and I can find that for you. Do you want to talk a, just a brief so that our, our audience at home can understand what we're doing next? This is an extension. We've been working on this for a little over two years now. Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank, doing our due diligence on whether or not this is a feasible project for us along Clear Creek. And what this will do will allow the city to make improvements, riparian benches, J-hooks, bouldering, just a lot of really cool things that'll help with the stream as well as it will let us add length to the stream, which is the, over the years, there's been a tendency to try to straighten the stream, which is not good for the stream. And so that'll allow us to add length to that. So I'll let Judy talk about the next step because we've really come to a, we're going to jump in point in this project.
Thank you Sherri. Yeah, Judy Joyce, I'm with Impact 7G, leading this mitigation banking project with Clear Creek. We're very, very excited about it. This is really an opportunity for the City of Coralville to invest in an ecosystem restoration. So investing in the restoration of Clear Creek. And in exchange for that investment, there will be credits generation, credits generated. And those credits, those credits generated could then be sold for permities that need mitigation for their projects. So if you think of it as like you've heard of like carbon trading or nutrient trading, this is, this is stream or wetland restoration trading. So basically there's an investment made here by the City of Coralville to restore the stream. And then there'll be credits generation, generated, and then those credits could then be sold to meet permits requirements for the DOT or an individual or farmer or developer to again, meet their permit requirements. So what, what this really is, is to try to, what, what we've done so far is, is assess the stream, determine the existing conditions that are there, and then through our data collection, came up with what does the stream really want to be? You know, where, where is it going to be most happy? So currently when you go out there, you'll see banks are collapsed and there's a lot of trees in the creek. And so if you try paddling on it, it's very, very difficult. And this, what we're looking at is again, what does that stream want to be? Help it get there and then construct it. It's, you know, help it along a little bit faster so that we can enjoy it now. And again, generate those credits so then again, we can pay for this project and also maybe generate some income for future investments in, in stream restoration or wetland restoration, so.
And just an overview, this one would, this banking instrument would include our phase, phase one, which would be from where we go under at I, at 380 and then over to I-80. So this is West Core Drive and this is where that work would take place. We would have some, adding some sinuosity to the creek, adding oxbows, those banks, just really doing a, a nice job through there. Then we would go down to what we call, refer to as Becky's Creek. And this will give us an opportunity to, to handle some of the water that's coming onto our property from the interchange project. So this water funnels down off of, of the road, comes down through here. So we'll be able to add, do some different projects there to slow that water down, get it to infiltrate. Some different things there on Becky's Creek. And then lastly, the, the third area is, this is Hawkeye Hotels Business Building. So that kind of gives you an area of where this is at. And again, oxbows, changing how the creek meanders. Am I getting this all correct Judy?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what, what, what are, one of the results is going to be is, again, right now, if you paddle this creek, it's, it's, it's beautiful, but it's dangerous. There's a lot of debris in there, a lot of snags. There's also times where the, you know, the, there's so much sediment in the stream, the water's low, it's, you're dragging a lot of the way. So we're, we're looking at designing this so that you'll, the, the paddling will be improved. So recreation will be improved, fishing will be improved on the creek as well, so.
I think what I noticed when I go down through it too, is there's times where you're just, the banks are so high above you that you think, oh, I hope nothing happens and I have to try to crawl out of here.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
So, great. Any questions?
I think one of the things that, I, I, I just think that this is a fantastic project. And one of the things that is exciting to me about it is, you know, you mentioned the, the revenue that could be generated. And aside from some revenue that would need to be set aside for maintenance, we would be able to use those dollars, they're, they're unrestricted.
That's correct. They're, so basically there's a certain amount of the sale of credits will go to make sure this gets maintained and is, is functional in perpetuity, but then the rest of the revenue generated is unrestricted funds. So that could go as however the city feels the need for those funds to go, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a win, win, win. It's a win for the environment. It's a, it's a win for the, the recreation aspect and then also a win from a revenue standpoint as well.
We recommend going forward with the contract of, of going forward with the banking instrument and 90% construction plans for a price of $420,000 with Impact 7G.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 13 is for bonds. This borrowing is for the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center Property Improvement Plan pursuant to agreements with Hyatt Franchising LLC and Marcus Edgewater LLC. And we will consider the resolution.
Resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $15 million credit agreement anticipation notes and the execution of related documents introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? We have our Finance Director, Tony Rotlin, here to answer any questions you might have. Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 14 is a consulting services agreement. This agreement is for professional consulting services to assist with the construction administration of projects and tenant build-outs, property management and leasing oversight in the Iowa River Landing District, and is not to exceed $20,000 per month. Resolution?
Resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Duran Real Estate Group for the Iowa River Landing District, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any discussion or questions on this item?
This is, this is just a continuation of an existing agreement.
Yeah, but it's a vastly scaled back because previously it was, we were having services about 1.2 million for the year. And this will be, take it down to just 250,000 for the year. And I would hope that within the next couple of years, we won't even need that kind of service.
Great, thanks. Any other questions on this item?
I guess, why did it get scaled back so much?
Because of the amount of services that were requesting and the number of people involved are significantly decreased because we have a lot less amount of space that's left for build-out and management.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 15, Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center Improvements. This agreement is for Benjamin West to act as purchasing agent for the Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center Improvements Project and is not to exceed $155,000. Resolution?
Resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Benjamin West in connection with the fiscal improvements plan at the Coralville Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 16 is a settlement agreement. This settlement agreement requires the City of Coralville to pay the remaining architectural fees due under contract to JLG Architects, and then JLG Architects will pay ArenaCo the sum of $550,000. All parties admit no wrongdoing and release each other from future claims. Resolution, please?
Resolution approving a settlement agreement between JLG Architects, ArenaCo, and the City of Coralville regarding the Extreme Arena Project introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments on this item?
What was the balance that was originally then?
The, you mean for the, the payment of the fees?
Yeah.
To them? Oh, it was just the, we, it was just the whatever, I think it was like 375,000, but that was part of the contract that we just, we, it was due to them anyways, but we just held that back to, we made sure everything was taken care of. So it was, it was monies we already had that we were going to pay out.
That's what I thought, yep.
Any other questions on this item? Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 17, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, before I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, I have an amendment I would like you to consider.
All right.
Please amend item Q on the agenda to read $1,453.92 instead of $4,453.92.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now do we need to vote on the amendment?
Yeah, so you just do a voice vote on the amendment.
All right.
We need a second on the amendment though first.
Okay. Could I get a second on that amendment?
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Quinn. All in favor say aye.
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 The amendment is approved.
And then I would like the council to please consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended, A through R inclusive.
Moved by Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved as amended, all ayes. Item number 18, City Administrators' Report.
Yes, I'd just like to remind people that the Fourth Fest Basket Auction is coming up, put on by our volunteer committee. And they, all proceeds go to the annual Fourth Fest, and that'll be on April 2nd at Brown Deer at 5:30 it starts. So encourage people to stop out. It's a really fun event and it goes to a good cause. And Sherri, you've got a lot of things opening and registrations start. I just thought if you'd like to share with the public registrations that are opening. Brown Deer is opening, Bunkers is opening, so lots of things happening.
Spring is finally here, we hope. Today didn't feel like it. We are anticipating, hopefully we won't get too much rain, but we're anticipating opening Brown Deer Golf Club on Friday. That's the plan. They did open, they didn't, they couldn't resist yesterday. It got really, really nice. And they went ahead and opened for a little while, but then had to shut it back up today. So officially it's Friday unless we, you just get rained out. Bunkers at Brown Deer, or Bunkers Bar and Grill will open on April 4th. And our grill hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then if people linger around and are having drinks, we will continue to serve them into the evening as well. That's Monday through Sunday and will be in through the late October, early November, so those hours. Events at Greenview are currently taking bookings. That's the upstairs space at Brown Deer. So if you're interested in a shower, wedding shower, a wedding itself, what else have we had recently? We've had, we, bar mitzvahs, bat mitzvahs, retirement parties. Quinceañera, all of those things, just really fun things. Graduation party. Kelly Carter is our person, our events coordinator there and can walk you through those details. And they do a really nice job of working with everyone's budget and finding something that really works for the group to have their, to have their event there. We are currently working on our activity guide for summer and that will be out the first week of April. Registration for summer activities starts April 9th. We are right now taking summer camp registrations. Those packets were out the first week of March. And we have all three locations back open this year. So want to make sure that people get a jump on that because spots do fill really quickly. And we also have half-day summer camps as well. So if you are still somebody who's working from home and, but don't want your kids at home with them all day long, consider a half-day summer camp. So, and then we have camps at the theater, which also opened the fir, around the first week of March as well. But I think, are those full?
Several of our most popular venues for pulling, adding new sessions, which is a thrill.
So, so just all kinds of, of fun things going on. This is a year that we paint the indoor pool, so all of our, our lessons will be outdoor this summer. So as long as bids come in favorably here on the next council meeting and that gets approved, we will have some repairs to make, some bidding and redoing the deck. So all lessons will be outside, but that's a great place to have lessons. That's the way I, I taught lessons for years and years and loved it.
Plus there's jobs available.
Lots and lots of jobs available, always. We, we have jobs in parks, in horticulture, streetscape crew. We're trying to round that out. Golf course is not doing too badly there, but we still do need servers, banquet help and cooks at the golf course. Sherri offered her daughter to become a cook this summer, and so she is going to learn how to be a line cook at Brown Deer. And let's see, summer camp counselors and of course lifeguards and swim lesson instructors. And if you are someone who loves swimming, grew up swimming, you're 45 years old right now and you still just would like to get in the pool, just throwing out that, that number. You can be 55, 65, anybody who can, still has the ability to swim and loves the water and loves to share that with the community. We want to talk to you because it's going to take more than just some high school and college students to run our pools. We've really found that out through COVID, that we really need to diversify our staff in terms of ages. So we come and talk to us. We just had a retired couple come in this week that I had talked to back in November and, and said, we'd love to have you take swimming, take lifeguarding. that I had talked to back in November and, and said, we'd love to have you take swimming, take lifeguarding. They came back from Texas last week and this week came to talk to us and said, you know what? We want to help the community out and we're going to do this. So they're going to take lifeguarding with us. We will do interviews with you and put you into a lifeguarding class. So you come in, you know you've got the job, you go and pass the class, you pick your schedule for the summer. So, um, great. I mean, I, I can't say enough about my experience as a lifeguard and swim lesson instructor. I started teaching lessons when I was 12. Don't tell the state that. Um, I started lifeguarding when I was 14 and just, you know, continued that on through my early twenties. And then it kind of, that's the way I kind of got turned into Parks and Recreation. I found out that there's full-time jobs that I can get in that area.
That's cool.
Sherri, is this the first non-divorce year?
This is our first, yes.
So is there a little different?
August 18th, we transferred over to a new food and beverage company. Um, their LLC is called Bunkers at Brown Deer LLC. And they are the owners of Hudson's, Shorts, Stella and The Guild. So if you are familiar with those restaurants and like their food, um, we, they'll have not the same kinds of food, but some similarities and some, some tried and true favorites. And we're excited about them getting started. Um, they had a very short season last year, very limited menu. Um, we've been doing a lot of work there to update some things at, at Brown Deer and we're ready to go.
They have amazing bacon. I am a bacon fan. Their bacon is incredible.
There you go.
I filled like a whole plate just with bacon at an event that I was at.
Nice.
Sherri, when can people expect to reserve community garden plots?
They're almost full. We started in February. Yeah, so that's February. We've got a few 10-by-15s left. All of our 10-by-30s are gone.
Right.
So it's time to, time to reserve.
I figured, I thought if people thought it was still open, they better hurry up.
Yes, and on that job application, don't wait until May 15th. I, I, we, we said that, we had a job fair last, this past month and we ended up with 41 people coming through the door and talking to us about jobs. It's the first time we've ever tried anything like that. But so many high school students that would come in, and a lot of them with their parents. And that's my, you know, my message to people is it's too late to wait until May. We try to hire before April 15th. We would love to be fully staffed and me standing in our city administrator's office doing a, a happy dance. We're full, we're full. So make those applications today.
What's the youngest age, Sherri?
We have a few jobs for 15-year-olds. The most of our jobs are for 16 or 18-year-olds. But we do, we are starting our lifeguards out this year, mentoring them with an, with an experienced guard and helping them through that process of learning at the age of 15. Our concession stand workers all have to be 16 because of the type of equipment they use.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that overview. We appreciate it. A lot of exciting things happening.
That's it, mayor.
Okay, fantastic. I don't have anything. I was going to mention the, the Fourth Fest Basket Auction. Really excited that we are able to have that event in person this year. Um, this is the, I think last year we had the, an online auction. We are starting to get some prizes here in the lobby of City Hall. So if you want to come by and, and take a look. And I will be contributing a, a mayor's cake. However, none of you have to worry because I am not baking it. My husband is going to bake it. He's the one that does all of the, the cooking. I am helping him plan it, but rest assured, I am not baking the mayor's cake. But it will be fabulous. All right, that is all I have. City attorneys' report?
I have nothing, Kevin.
I just want to remind people tomorrow night, the Heartlanders play the Fort Wayne Comets for the last time this year and they've had some entertaining matchups the last couple of times they've been in. So I think it'll be an exciting game to watch tomorrow night if you want to, want to stop by and have some fun at the Heartlanders game.
Thank you, yeah. They, they have been, that has been a spirited match.
Yeah, spirited would be a good word for it.
All right, thank you. Committee and council members' report? We'll start down at this end with councilmember Knutson.
Yeah, I'll second what Kevin just said. I went to the game that somewhat historic. It was a blast, but if you don't like fights, don't go.
They did. They were all in there.
I think they had four players on the bench. Um, the only thing I have to report, I had a meeting with Lucy Barker and her husband, talked to them about having a function, probably an open house type function to raise awareness of Houses into Homes, their organization. Um, I learned about it when I first came on, or first, was first elected. I just think it's a great organization. So certainly my fellow council members will be getting an invitation when we can figure out when to do that and certainly anybody else who's interested, please contact me and I can make, make sure you have an invite if you're interested in learning about Houses into Homes. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Gross.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions. First, I had a constituent reach out. Maybe Shane, Kevin or Kelly can help me. If, if someone's been involved in a traffic accident, are they able to ask for the footage of, of security cameras or?
So here's the, so I talked to Scott Larson about this the other day. So our traffic cameras, that's not what they're really meant for. I think Scott said that they could possibly keep the footage for up to seven days. But by the time they get to court and they want the information, the, the video wouldn't be available. And, and it almost has to be at a perfect angle for the traffic cameras to catch that. They can always ask for, we, we give out, we give out body camera footage and footage from the car all the time. So they, they can ask for it, but when I tell them that, by the time they ask for it, usually the footage is not available. So it's not something we.
And that's the, that's on the.
That's not the purpose of those, yeah. That's not the purpose of those cameras.
Yeah, those cameras are there to operate the traffic signals. And so it would just be a, a chance if that ever was available.
Um, and second, I just, for those at the council, I, you know, we, we've talked about this before. I brought up, I think, a year and a half ago or so, and it was in litigation at the time. But just when we talk about employment and maybe the lack of workers and as we're all kind of facing shortages, when I brought up the Ban the Box Initiative that Waterloo had done and at the time was in litigation, but I believe the court has upheld most of those aspects. So I'd just be curious to have a discussion at some point about if that's something we want to pursue as a city to increase employability and, and reduce recidivism and other things that could be possible on it. So I'd like to put that on a future agenda, mayor. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. All right, councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also have a question from a community member regarding parks. Um, one of our resident members just wanted to know if there is a possibility that we could put a public park at 12th and Oakdale.
Put a, what did you say?
A public park?
Oh, a public park.
Yes.
12th and Oakdale.
12th and Oakdale.
Like in a big spot that's been for sale forever?
Yep.
Yeah, well.
I'm sure they'd sell it to us.
Yeah.
So we don't own that?
No, that's a commercial, owned for, and zoned neighborhood commercial. So it'd be an expensive location for a park.
And this, this community member said that, you know, that the, the people who live in that area is, is more than happy to work with the city in any capacity to hopefully make that happen. Because they think that that would be a good amenity to have. Yeah, well, maybe, maybe two.
But I live right across the street from that and my goal is when I leave council, I'm turning that into a beer garden.
Oh, that's my goal, actually. I would love to do that someday.
Partner.
You know what, you can have both.
And a park for the kids.
Right?
You go over here.
I guarantee people would.
I, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
People would love that, anyway.
Not sure insurance company would.
There's another fence discussion, Sherri.
But I guess just beside, you know, the point that we will have to buy the land, um, what is the ballpark of constructing a park? Just like.
It would vary drastically depending on what you put in the park, you know? Um, I, you really couldn't guess without knowing what you would put in it, yeah.
I mean, for that area, what would the city, like, maybe Sherri could answer the question if, for that area, what would be feasible? I know I put you on the spot, but I don't have the answer to these questions, so I figure.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue is that it's privately owned and they have it, I mean, it's a very expensive parcel. So I don't foresee that that would be.
Yeah, I also don't remember the acreage on that parcel, but we tried to grow a minimum of 20 acres of land for a park. So the one that was on council agenda tonight's a nine-acre parcel, but we are also getting another 20 acres just to the south of that. So Parks and Recreation Commission discussed that and said, okay, we can live with this. But we really would like to have 20 acres of contiguous land. That's what's written to our personal recreation policies.
Thank you.
And in Parks and Rec, we kind of work backwards, you know? If we get grant money for equipment and things like that, what can we get the most bang for our buck looking through all the catalogs and?
What was the last asking price for that? Because it's, that's why it hasn't sold. Isn't a big reason why it's so crazy expensive?
I, I don't know what it's listed at, but it's commercial ground and it's, it's got to be, you know, it's got to be seven figures for those, that parcel for sure. So.
It's been the market at least 15 years.
It's gone through a couple of different owners too, so.
Thank you. Um, I also would like to let the general public know that this Saturday, March 26th, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., the mobile clinic will be at the Coralville Public Library. Um, and at this time, they will have dental and physical therapy available. So take advantage of the mobile clinic. They do a great job, you know? And anybody can show up. They don't ask for any sort of payment or insurance or anything like that. So if you need dental work and physical therapy, do come. And that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Councilmember Dodd's.
Thank you, mayor. Last night, we had the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. Um, the fun part was our executive director, Sherri Proud, gave a really inspirational annual report, which you guys will hear tonight, about what wonderful things Parks and Rec has done over the last year. The more concerning thing was we had a big discussion about the Northridge Pavilion and how there has been 25 incidents of problems of rentals in six months' time. So I kind of want to just put that out there to the public. Um, we're going to have to change some policies. It's been so severe. And to be respectful, we have these wonderful amenities here in town and it is so much less expensive than other, you know, avenues that you could possibly rent. Um, but there's a lot of turnaround, especially on the weekends, that we rented out a lot. You know, it gets done at 11. It can turn around and be ready to, has to be cleaned up by 8 o'clock the next morning. And we have staff that's working at midnight trying to clean up really big messes. Um, we've also had people that are from Coralville renting to friends from other communities so that they get the Coralville rate instead of the out-of-the-city rate. So there's a lot of issues going on. So we've discussed a lot of policy changes. And so I just ask people to be respectful of what we do as a city for our constituents and just use good manners and good judgment. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And last but not least, councilmember Goodrich.
Just to wrap up, I'd like to make note that there are a number of student athletes and coaches from the University of Iowa that are residents of Coralville and we want to congratulate them for Big Ten championships, um, men and women's basketball teams, women's gymnastics and All-American wrestlers. We just say congratulations and we're so glad they're a part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.